It's 6:30 and I call the tonight's meeting to order January 9. First on the agenda is public comment and that is meant to be for anybody who wishes to make a comment on something that is not on the agenda. Anything that's on the agenda, we will cover as it comes up on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to make such a comment?
I just have a question.
Please, and you go up and you have to go to the microphone and state your name because otherwise FCTV can't pick you up.
Joe Bornstein, 226 Edgewater Drive West. I have a zoning question on, what do they call it, vacation rental by owner?
You mean like the VRBOs, Verbo that?
Yes.
Okay, what is your question?
What's the permitting process?
Jed, could you speak to that?
We can't. Public comment, not supposed to discussion.
No, he's asking a question and it's not on the agenda.
Well, with public comment, you typically don't interact on a topic. You just hear comment from the public. But I can say this because there was a question that's typically handled with a rental permit.
Why don't we listen to, he's got another minute, what his point is.
He just answered it.
No, he just asked a question, what's the permitting process?
He must have a reason.
Yeah, I have a reason.
I want to know the reason he's asking.
I have a house across the street from me that's been turned into a Verbo or whatever you want to call it. It beds 11 people, okay? It's in a residential area, has almost no parking. And my understanding is the Board of Health is the only one that issues a permit?
That I don't know, but they can or they can withdraw the uses of it if it's being overdone because the septic system is not adequate.
I would say, you know, I would just recommend to the gentleman that he stop by the planning office, we can answer his comments and help him through the process.
Okay.
And they really are quite helpful. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a question? We move on to the minutes of November 28th and December 12th. Paul?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes November 28th, 2023, as written.
Hey Pam, sorry, bringing you back in.
Okay.
Okay. With respect to the minutes of December 12th, there were actually two minutes. One was the joint meeting, the Falmouth Housing Authority, and the second one was the Planning Board meeting. So there's actually two minutes there. I recommend approval of minutes of the Planning Board on December 12th, as written. On the minutes with the joint meeting, I recommend approval with some modifications. And specifically, toward the end of the meeting, I brought up two points I thought were relevant that did not make it into the minutes. And they were followed by Mr. Galasso supporting one. And the one was the possibility of reaching out on a public-private partnership with people in Woods Hole on the housing issue. And the second one was looking at some of the existing housing stock in Falmouth and how it might be refurbished, upgraded or something. And Mr. Galasso followed that up and said that they're beginning to look at that. And his comment was in the minutes, but the first two were not.
Did you change the minutes to reflect your comments?
I did.
Okay.
So I recommend approval with those modifications.
Okay, is there any other?
Second?
Any comment other than Paul's? Okay. It's been moved and seconded and we have to take a voice vote. All in favor, let's start with John.
John Drury, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Pat Kerford, aye.
Paul Dryer, aye.
And Pam? Pam?
Paul Drury, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Pam Harding Barrett, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks Pam. We move on to approval not required. The applicant is Damian Jude Lay. Plan of land to combine two lots into one lot located at 18 Noshon South and 0 Non-Emesett South.
Right, I'm just going to present this for the applicant because they live out of town or the engineer lives in the town who's representing the homeowner. So there's a lot 143 on Noshon South and lot 133 on Non-Emesett South that are just being combined into one lot. It's already gone through the land court process, so they're just formalizing it through us. It was given a new lot number of 177 by the land court.
So they're just looking for our blessing?
Yep.
Okay, are there any questions on the board?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion? Our motion people are all gone. Can you move approval without regard to?
Is this what, oh, I approve without regard, I motioned we approve this without regard to zoning. Build the building, just the change in the lot.
A second please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Pam?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
We heard you, okay, thank you. We move on to public hearings. The applicant Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapet Road LLC request to extend the special permit decision issued on October 21, 2020 to adjust boundaries of the existing developed lot to create conforming frontage and septic system location outside of Wetlands Buffer, a portion of the new lot being only 40 feet wide located at 98 and 108 Seapet Road. And Bob, were you going to? That is yours, isn't it?
I'm Bob Amen, I'm an attorney, I represent the applicant. Since the board is only five members tonight and five votes are required to approve the extension of special permit, and since it apparently is convenient to the board according to the town planner, we would like to request a continuance for two weeks.
Thank you, may I have a motion unless there is an objection on the board? May I have a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue for an additional two weeks?
I move continuance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Pam?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, for the record, that is continued to January 23rd.
Thank you.
23rd?
23rd, yes. Okay, now, we are going to the public hearing on the Planning Board zoning articles for this spring 2024 town meeting and Jed is going to speak to those. He's got a nice PowerPoint.
I think Mr. Dryer has a.
Oh, you got, okay, thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the public meeting, public announcement for these Planning Board zoning articles was printed for article, the first six articles, they're not numbered, they will be at town meeting, the six articles up until now, and they were posted on.
It's at the end.
December 21st, 2023, all six articles.
And for the record, we'll have seven articles here tonight and I'll go through them for, with the presentation, I'll do a very quick summary, for the record Jed Cornoch, Town Planner, I'll do a very quick summary of each one and then of course you'll open it up for public comment. So with that, these are the seven articles that are currently proposed for town meeting. Article 1, 2, and 3 deal with the definition section. Article 4 deals with the conversion of a dwelling use which is located in several, three zoning districts in town. Article 5 and 6 deal with the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. And then Article 7 deals with the senior care retirement district. And I'll go through the specifics in just a minute. So Article 1, what we're doing with Article 1 is deleting certain definitions from Section 240 3.3 as you can see up on the screen. And those definitions will be relocated into the following sections that you see up there, into 247.5, 7.7, 9.6, 9.8, 14.3, and 14.4. So what does that mean? We're basically just taking the definitions that currently exist in the general definition section and we're picking them up and we're relocating them into those section-specific areas. The reason we're doing that is because those definitions apply only to that particular section of the bylaw. They don't apply to the entire bylaw itself. This is the way that the definitions were organized before we did our recodification effort, which was the rearranging of all of the material within the zoning bylaw. So we're simply reverting back to the old format. Article 2, or I'll just give you two examples and sort of, you know, explain exactly what this looks like. So on the left-hand side of the screen is what it looks like now, we call it before. Afterward, all of the definitions remain the same, no changes will be made to them, they'll just simply live in a different section of the zoning bylaws. You can see up on the top, that's 240 3.3, that's your general definition section. In this example, the Water Resource Protection Overlay District will receive its definitions that were there before, they'll now live in 247.7. Now, I picked two examples that are somewhat short, not a long list of definitions because it's difficult to fit on the screen. Let's see, here's example number two. Definitions that relate to the agricultural regulations, they live in Section 3.3 now, they'll simply be relocated, not changed, just relocated to Section 240 14.4. Article 2 is removing the categories because our current zoning bylaw was grouped by categories as you can see here. So up at the top in that blue box, it's called agricultural and farm-related terms. That's a category that our consultants developed for us. That's the issue here, it created some confusion because, you know, as you work your way through the bylaw, sometimes you get lost with these categories. So what we're doing is we're essentially deleting all the categories and just coming back to the old format, which is alphabetized list of definitions. Now, as you can see up on the screen, some of those related term areas are shown in italics. The reason for that is because in the first article, we deleted those categories or those terms and relocated them to their areas. So technically, they wouldn't be here when you get to Article 2 because they've already been relocated and the category's been deleted. So in this case, the categories get removed. And then in Article 3, what we do is we just go back to that alphabetized list, okay? So alphabetized, in Article 2, apologies, in Article 3, we get rid of the categories. So without being too confusing, we'll go back to Article 1. Essentially, what we're doing is just going back to the old way that the definitions were listed, alphabetized.
But there's no changes to the actual bylaw?
No changes whatsoever to the actual definitions. So in Article 4, as you know, the Planning Board was interested in making some adjustments to the conversion of a dwelling use which is found in the business district or allowed in the business district by special permit, in the public use district and the single residence use district. So the adjustments, as you can see up on the screen, are allowing more dwellings to be eligible. So currently, there's a restriction on your dwelling has to be in existence as of January 1, 1980. There's been some issues with folks having to be able to prove that one was in existence and the number of bedrooms that were in existence at that time. So the board was considering some language that would make more dwellings eligible for that, essentially getting rid of that date and saying if your dwelling was in existence for the past 10 years, you're eligible for this conversion through a special permit process. Then what we wanted to do is create consistent use names and standard language. So right now, the language in the business district and the public use district and the single residence district is somewhat different and so we just wanted to clean that up, make it all consistent. And then of course, in the single residence district, there's differences between what you can do in the single residence AA, single A, B, and C districts as it relates to the general residence. So again, just making those two areas consistent on how they treat a conversion of a dwelling. So I went through this before, but I'll sort of highlight it again. In the conversion of a dwelling, you, a property owner, can currently convert a dwelling into not more than four units if, as I said before, the dwelling's been in existence as of January 1, 1980, and that there are no material changes to the exterior of the existing dwelling, and that the zoning Board of Appeals determines that the size of the dwelling and the lot are suitable for the conversion. So that's the basic framework. What you can see up on the table here and for the folks who are here in the audience and at home, I'll explain in a minute, there are red line versions of each one of these changes. And what you'll see in the conversion is an attempt to make that consistent base framework across the business, public use, and single residence district. So that's the purpose of Article 4. And you can see that here on the screen. So on the top left is the business use area, in the bottom left is public use. As you can see, there's, what you can see on the screen, the black text is what was existing, the red text is the new information. So you can just see right off the bat that there was some missing information in public use that we added here to make it consistent across all three. And what I was mentioning before, in the single residence district, this is the area for general residence, so there were different rules for if your property was in the general residence district as it was compared to the single residence district. So again, what we tried to do is make those two areas consistent. And that's reflected in the red lines on the screen. Article 5 and Article 6 deal with the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. Very simply, the adjustments include making the Planning Board the special permit granting authority if and when an applicant chooses a special permit use in a mixed-use development. It also allows building height up to 40 feet on parcels over two acres in size. It does have a stipulation, as you can see up on the screen, that each foot of height increase would also increase the setbacks by two feet. And then, as you can see, it adds a shared parking agreement as an item that would allow the Planning Board to reduce parking within that district. Currently, the only thing that is in the bylaw is a car sharing program. So if an applicant has a car sharing program, they can apply for the reduction and it would be up to the Planning Board to decide that. Now, in this case, if you have a shared parking agreement, that's also another way to do it.
Is this appropriate time?
So in Article 5, you can see the red line changes. So this section here attempts to make it clear that when an applicant is deciding whether or not to use the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, that essentially there's a fork in the road. They have to decide to use one district, the overlay, or the underlying zoning district. They don't, there's not a combination there. And it also, as you can see on that last sentence, it makes the Planning Board a special permit granting authority if and when a special permit use is requested, or applied for, I should say. Specifically, this is the language that was added for the 40-foot building height, again, only in situations where the property is over two acres in size. And then, as I mentioned, that shared parking agreement as a way to allow the Planning Board to allow a parking reduction. Here's the definition, this is Article 6, so again, dealing with the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. There was some concern about the definition as it's currently shown. And so basically, what is being shown here is the potential changes. There's a cross-out of the term without limitation and just getting rid of some extra language about existing buildings and simply just making a very clean definition here which just allows for a development containing a mix of residential and complementary non-residential uses, including commercial, institutional, retail, and professional offices. So again, that's just a minor change to the mixed-use development definition within Mr. Cot, the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. Article 6. Last article is Article 7. This one by far has the most amount of adjustments to it. A lot of words up on the screen, so I'm going to leave it there for a few minutes, but it's a three-part article. The first part of the article is looking to make text amendment changes to the bylaw itself. This is the senior care retirement district. The second part of the article asks to amend the zoning map, so expand the district, and I'll get into that in a minute. And then the third part of the article amends any reference to what is now known and what the future will not be known as, but what is now known is the senior care retirement, senior care retirement district. So I'll go through some of those changes and explain to you the purpose of all three of these. First, we're going to start with what is the senior care retirement district and where is it? So it is one district located in town, it's up at the southeast quadrant of the Route 28 and 151 interchange. It's approximately seven acres in size and it basically allows age-restricted senior housing. And it allows currently six units per acre and it has a density bonus that allows the Planning Board through special permit to allow the density up to eight units per acre. And you can see it over here on the screen, this is the current senior care retirement So, part one, I won't go through all of the red lines because there are a lot of them, but again, copies are here, copies are on the website, I'm going to show that at the end of the presentation. But the basic adjustments here are adding workforce housing community as a special permit use. It outlines the parameters of what a workforce housing community is and how it would be permitted. Essentially, it would be its own sub-district and I'll get into that when we show the map amendments. It also creates a unique definition for workforce housing, so something that the town hasn't seen since the zoning bylaw came into play. As I mentioned, it does create two sub-districts, so now you'll have a senior care retirement sub-district and a workforce housing sub-district. Again, I'll show that in the map amendment, it'll become a little bit clearer. And then lastly, it clarifies density limitations, which I mentioned before, currently at six units per acre, but can be allowable up to eight units per acre through special permit. It clarifies the dimensional compliance and how an applicant would comply with the setbacks and building height accessory, or additional stuff. It also provides additional language about accessory facilities because the current language essentially allowed accessory facilities, but only within structures. So this new language essentially says they can be outside of existing structures. It adds some parking information as it relates to workforce housing and the workforce housing community. And then, as I mentioned before, it talks about the density bonus for the workforce housing community. Now, it's very important that I highlight at this point that in order to apply for and be granted a density bonus up to eight units per acre for the workforce housing community, 25% of those units have to be considered affordable. And so with the 25% affordable in a rental situation, all of the workforce housing units would then be counted towards our subsidized housing inventory. So it's a little bit of a benefit to the town that 25% would be affordable and then the potential applicant would receive that density bonus if this language is passed at town meeting. So this is the current map amendment. What you see here is approximately 32 acres of land at the southeast quadrant of that interchange I mentioned before. Right here in this square-ish type shape is the, or would be, the new workforce housing sub-district that would allow only a workforce housing community. Then, in this shape here with the hatch lines, is the senior care retirement sub-district that allows a number of additional uses as was previously allowed in the zoning bylaw, the senior care retirement district. So no changes have been made to what's allowed in that district, with the exception, I should be very clear, of adding the ability to have a childcare facility onsite. So that is the map amendment. And then, part three is again, just changing the references within the existing zoning bylaw because now the title of senior care retirement is now senior care retirement and workforce housing district. So we just need to clean up that language. Anything that refers to that section of the bylaw needs to be cleaned up and made whole.
Can I ask you a question on that?
It's a perfect time for questions.
Does the workforce housing have to be related to the senior care facility?
What do you mean by related?
Well, are they independent? In other words, workforce housing could be anybody in the community or would be only restricted to the people who are working at the senior care facility?
No, they are independent uses. So workforce housing, as it's defined in the text amendments, is essentially anyone who is, who has an area median income of up to 140%, or I should say 140% of the area median income. It is not age-restricted, whereas the senior care retirement district is still age-restricted to 55 and over. So they are independent uses.
Previously, when we discussed this particular project, I know it's a specific project and is a bylaw, but there was a lot of conversation how the workforce housing is going to support the senior care center. And I'm just wondering whether that's linked together or whether it would be open to the general public if needed?
It would be open to the general public.
Thank you.
John?
Is the workforce housing going to be eight units per acre also?
Provided that 25% of them are considered to be affordable and allowed to be included on the SHI, yes, you can increase the workforce housing up to eight units per acre.
So it would be workforce housing and affordable housing, it would be a mix then, if it goes that direction?
Yep. So again, the workforce housing is defined as up to 140% of the AMI. Obviously, within that could be 80%. So if they have a certain number of 80% units, 25% at least, then you can grant the density bonus up to eight units per acre.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, did you want to?
Yeah, I just need a couple of minutes. I just wanted to comment on what I feel is the importance of making changes to our parking. We've been trying to deal with it as a board and we thought we had the bylaw that was moving in that direction, but everybody has an opinion and they change and from time to time. And we have opinions and decisions that are not really compatible with what we were trying to do. We are strangling the housing in this town with our parking requirements. Young people can barely afford a place to live, let alone a place to park. By requiring additional parking for housing is subsidizing car usage for the lack of housing and is taking our most valuable real estate in our town and making it available parking, which we do not need. This town is way overparked, we've never filled up our parking spaces throughout the town, and the demand more is just taking your eye off the ball.
Thank you, Jim. Good point.
If I may, just one last item. So as I mentioned, there are copies here for the public to take of members of the audience, but there's also, each one of the copies that are here are also listed on the town's website. I'm not sure if folks saw how I got there, but let's just pretend I'm at the homepage. If I go to departments and just click on planning, here are all the actual articles and importantly, here are the red lines that folks can download, print on them, their own view on the computer. But I'll just click on one example just to show quickly. So here's our definitions. So what this shows is definitions that were in Article or Section 240 3.3 that we are relocating to their, call them their home destination. They're shown here as being added. Again, no changes are being made. So for example, in the wind energy systems. So, for example, in the wind energy systems, all we're doing is just taking the definitions that currently exist in the definition section and just putting them back where they were before in their specific home. So again, everybody can just peruse the links here, and if there's any questions, you know, they can always stop by the planning office and we can answer them for them.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I hate to go backward, but regarding the workforce housing, the property that it showed on the screen, the land usage, how many units of workforce housing could go there if it was eight units per acre? Do you know that answer, Jed? What size is the parcel in the dotted?
Here, I believe, is eight acres approximately.
Eight times eight would be 64 approximately.
I'm trying to remember the exact number, but I don't have it off the top of my head. I thought the presentation we had received earlier was 40 units of workforce housing.
But what could, I'm just asking what, for using those numbers?
Sure.
So it could be theoretically 64 units.
Right.
Out of those 64, 25% would have to be 80% or less.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
80% AMI?
Correct.
Yes.
I thought it was 140% AMI.
Up to. So the workforce housing can go up to 140%.
Up to, okay, that's important.
The default part would be 80% or less.
Correct? Yep, absolutely.
Paul has a question.
We've been through this for months, maybe a year, so we're based, the board is fairly familiar with what's going on here. I think your presentation is excellent, and it's very logical and should be relatively easy to follow, but my concern is this has to be approved by town meeting. And what's the strategy for getting the town meeting members up to speed so that we don't have a problem when we actually have town meeting?
Sure, yeah, well, part of that is going to the precinct meetings, that's a really big part of it, and answering any questions that they might have. And then, as I do, every town meeting is sending out the email with informational links to all town meeting members so that everybody has a chance to review all of the articles. And as I mentioned before, anytime, I'm here every day, sometimes Saturdays and Sundays, kidding, it's just Monday through Friday, but anyone can come by the planning office, give me a call, and we can answer the questions for them.
You don't go home that week?
Generally not, no.
Okay, I think we can open it up now to the public and any questions or comments you wish to make. The general rule is, though, you've got to come up to the microphone and state your name, otherwise it's not picked up by the television, so nobody out there in the viewing audience knows what's going on. Sir?
Hi, everyone, my name's Dave Moriarty, Thalmouth, Massachusetts. I have a question about the wind energy system bylaw. So definition changes only, so...
Is this on the agenda?
No, wind energy is not on there.
It's part of the definition.
Oh, part of the definition.
Definition, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
All right, we're back on board here.
Yeah.
All right. Special permit is needed for any, any, any part of that, wind energy.
That's right.
So that won't change at all.
Nope.
So it's a simple definition change.
Just picking them up, putting them down, that's all we're doing.
Would it be stupid of me to ask why, or?
Well, so part of the reason is because what we've heard from the public and some of the practitioners about the definition section is that it's confusing. The categories created confusion, so we just wanted to go back to a straight alphabetized list. But in order to do that correctly, because some of the definitions don't apply to everything in the bylaw, they have to be relocated into their specific sections where they're supposed to be located.
So cables, power plants, anything that has to do with wind energy systems must have a special permit, requires a special permit, no ifs, ands, or buts.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very broad question, but yes, special permit is required for wind energy systems, yes. If you have more specific questions, I mean, I can go over that with you, but...
Well, anything that has to do with the wind energy system has to apply for a special permit. There's no ifs, ands, or buts, there's no special anything, there's no, that's a fact, right?
Correct.
We can take that to a court of law.
It's what's listed in the bylaw, yes, you're correct.
That's usually where these end up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? In the back.
Dave Bosnowski, Lucerna Avenue, I'm also president of the Thalmithite Semer vista Neighborhood Association. And Mr. Moriarty addressed some of the questions. We had the concern regarding any changes to the bylaws relative to wind, and I think the gentleman answered the question. My question is the procedure here for all these changes, by virtue of some of the questions the board has asked, it sounds like it hasn't originated necessarily from the board. Is this a proposal going to the board for consideration? Is that the way?
This is the board's proposal going to town meeting to clarify that which has been passed by town meeting and approved by the attorney general.
But some of you folks have asked questions of the gentleman based on his presentation, and I was under the impression that this was something that you had already approved as the planning board?
Have not voted it to the warrant yet.
But it's originating from you, or is the gentleman making a proposal to the board?
Yes. John?
Some of these questions are so that the viewing audience at home can understand this better.
Okay.
It's not necessarily what we need to understand, but some people have asked me questions, and I want to make sure everybody understands it.
Okay. And organizational changes are one thing, but any significant changes obviously have to be approved by the town meeting and then go to the state for approval, or the state first?
That's correct.
And the attorney general can approve or disapprove of what we think is a good thing.
Right. Okay. I think you answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, anybody else? Yes, sir?
Joe Bornstein, Thalmouth, Mass. Question on your conversion in the business district of a single-family house to not more than four units. What size are those units? I mean, are we, are these one-bedroom units, are we building flop houses?
That's not the intent. The intent is, as it reads, whatever can be put in there that does not change the character of the neighborhood, the look of the building. If you've got a building in there and you could by bylaw build, say, four units in there, but you can't fit them in, you can't get four units.
But that's what I'm saying, what size? When you say a unit, how big is a unit or how small is a unit?
That's not defined.
So what you're telling me is somebody can convert a single-family house to basically a flop house?
No. It has to be an apartment, which means you have to have facilities in there. Each unit is its own unit.
So it's kitchen, bathroom, bedroom?
Yes. It can also be an efficiency apartment, but they have their own bathroom and their own kitchenette.
All right. And this is only in a business district?
No, because there are residential districts also that you can convert. When we had our housing production plan, this was something that was brought out as a, I'm going to put it in quotes, "easy" way of getting more affordable housing in Thalmouth without changing the character of Thalmouth. And to do that kind of thing, you have to, again, Jim, with the parking, it'd be wonderful if we could do that kind of thing where you don't need public transportation, but if there is parking necessary for it, it has to be screened, or it has to be handled in a manner that the house that is being converted is handled, so you don't get a parking lot, that's quite obvious.
I think I can explain it. This bylaw exists now, and we're changing it is to qualify for it, the bylaw says the house had to be in existence by 1980, and we're now just saying it had to be in existence 10 years ago. But the bylaw's been in existence since 1985.
Okay, so...
It's not a big change, it's changing of the date.
How old the building has to be?
To make more houses available.
Okay.
I misunderstood then, I thought you were looking at it differently, because that is what we're essentially doing, is changing the date.
Well, I wasn't familiar where it was coming from, that's why, I'm trying to figure out what you're actually doing.
It exists right now, it's been on the books for a long, long time, and most of the houses that could have been converted have been, and a lot of years have gone by since past, and we just thought the date needed to be adjusted.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I would like, I'd just like to make one more...
Go ahead, Melinda.
...comment. The bedroom count cannot change, so if it's a two-bedroom house, it can't have more than two bedrooms. So that limits how many units you could put in as well.
Currently.
Currently, yeah, but currently.
Sorry, I missed that one, Melinda. Thank you. Anybody else? Bob?
Thanks, I'm Bob Amant, Thalmith resident, speaking not for any particular client. As you know, I do a lot of land use law. Just with respect to the last discussion, I think it's important to point out that the conversion bylaw requires a special permit, and the zoning board of appeals has to decide based on a lot of criteria that the benefits of the project outweigh any detriment, and that includes the adequacy of the site, the suitability, the effect on the neighborhood, and so on. So that's a, everybody can't just convert their house to multiple units.
Now, I do have one comment about that bylaw change, and that is that although a goal was to eliminate inconsistencies, there is an inconsistency between the general residence district language for the conversion and the other residential districts, in that there's new language that allows the zoning board of appeals to permit a small expansion of the dwelling, says by 10%. That's new language, but it's not in the general residence district proposed language. And I don't really understand why it wouldn't be. The general residence district is, after all, the buffer between residential zones and business zones. You can have the same situation as in the residential zones of having a dwelling that would be very suitable for the conversion, but it's a better conversion if there was a little addition here or there. So I don't understand why that language is in the residential zones but left out of the general residence district, and I'd suggest that you take a look at that. I don't know why, I don't remember discussing that.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, my memory's a little foggy on the topic, because the board discussed it multiple times, but I can't remember exactly why it was not considered, but it's definitely something that you can toss around in your discussions.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to talk about the article that changes the definition of mixed-use development, and then about the articles that concerned the Mr. Cott district. With respect to the mixed-use development definition, the proposed language is a development containing a mix of residential and complementary, non-residential uses, including commercial, institutional, retail, and professional offices. That's it. So I have a number of problems with that. One is the word complementary. It's not defined anywhere, I don't know what it means. It really takes away the concept of Mr. Cott being by right, it leaves it to the planning board's discretion as to decide which uses in the bylaw are allowed. And that's a big change from the present language, which says any mix of residential and non-residential uses without limitation. And that without limitation language had a purpose. It was intended to mean it wasn't limited to permitted uses in the bylaw like the old definition, it was intended to include special permit uses. And since we're now clarifying through these bylaw changes the role of a special permit in the Mr. Cott development, I think it's important that we not have language which takes away from the by-right intention. So I would remove the word complementary. And then it says including commercial, institutional, retail, and professional offices. We've had problems with our bylaw in years past with the definition of what's a professional office and what's another office. And given the nature of the Mr. Cott district in business areas on Main Street, there's absolutely no reason to have that word professional in there. Somebody wants to have a real estate office, don't have to argue about is that a professional use, it's a license use. Is it a professional use? I think, I think it's not. With no offense to Mr. Fox, anyway, that word should be taken out. And in fact, if we're just going to say including and listing a number of types of use, some of which are broad, commercial, and others retail and professional offices, which are less so, when it doesn't have the words including but not limited to, then there's going to be problems, I think. Are restaurants allowed? Fitness facilities? Various services? The answer, of course, is yes, they should be allowed. And what the bylaw should say, instead of this language, and I've drafted some language you can consider, give you copies of, a development containing a mix of residential and non-residential uses, including commercial, institutional, retail offices, and any other use permitted by right or by special permit in the underlying zoning district. That's what the intent was. So in the business district or in the business redevelopment district, you can have a variety of uses, some by special permit, like commercial accommodations. And this simply says, any of those uses can be in a mixed residential, in a mixed-use development under Mr. Cott, subject obviously to the planning board's approval. So I recommend some changes to that article, which is the definition of mixed use. With regard to the other sections of the Mr. Cott bylaw, with regard to the language about the parking reduction, I think we can do better than simply adding the reference to shared parking. So there's a lot of other parking reduction strategies. And I think the language sentence that concerns the parking reduction would be better if it read as follows. An applicant may be granted a parking reduction, provided that a car-sharing program, van service, that's new language, shared parking agreement, or other traffic/parking reduction strategy or strategies is or are employed, and provided that the planning board determines through site plan review that sufficient parking is provided, taking into account traffic reduction strategies so employed. Now, I'll give you that language, you can think about it, you can compare it to what has been proposed. I think that's better language and more comprehensive for you, and gives the planning board more discretion. And by reference to site plan review, I did not mean in that point to eliminate the necessity for a special permit if that's what's decided. So it could say through site plan review and/or a special permit if required. And finally, on the definition of mixed-use development, right now, Mr. Cott uses are either mixed-use development, and that's by itself, defined as I've just discussed, or it's multifamily dwelling units with density up to 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland. There has been a problem of what's the There has been a problem of what's the intent of the Mr. Cod bylaw? If you have residential use at a density of 20 units per acre, can you have other uses in addition to that? It's come up, the question of if you have 20 per acre, can you also have commercial accommodations? If you have 20 units per acre, can you have a big restaurant? And the answer should be through the planning board's site plan review process, or if applicable, and/or if applicable, the special permit. Now, there are certain criteria. Setbacks, lot coverage, meeting the parking, flow-neutral bylaw from the selectmen, and so on. There are plenty of limits on what one can do on the lot in the mixed residential, commercial overlay district. But we need to be clear that this is 20 units plus you can have other development on top of that. And that, I believe, has been the intent. So I would have the where it says you can have a mixed-use development, I would expand on that. And I drafted this, mixed-use development, including, so that's including residential multifamily dwelling units with density up to 20 units per 40,000. So it's clear that the mixed-use development can include that and additional development. Provided that if the mixed-use development includes a non-residential use allowed only by special permit in the underlying zoning district, a special permit for the special permit use shall be required for which the planning board shall be the special permit granting authority. Now, that repeats some language that's already suggested in some of the new language, but I think it makes it very clear what you can do, what is a mixed use in the district. I also think that unfortunately we need to, to protect the workforce housing Mr. Cod project that's present going forward where, and I think in error, as you know, the Board of Appeals is considering a special permit. This is for the nursing home on Main Street. I would add the following language. If the planning board has approved a maj, a mixed-use development under section 247.5, that's Mr. Cod, prior to December 22, 2023, that's the date of first publication of notice of this hearing on these articles, and that will be the effective date of the zoning change, making the planning board the special permit granting authority. So if the planning board has already, has before that date approved a Mr. Cod project in a site plan review, and if such approval allows a special permit use which the zoning board of appeals approves or has approved pursuant to an application filed prior to December 22, 2023, a special permit from the planning board shall not be required. Without this language, it's my opinion that the zoning bylaw amendments passed in April will be retroactive to December 22, which is prior to the hoped-for grant of a special permit by the
Hello?
By the ZBA, and prior to issuance of a building permit.
Hello?
And I don't think that the mayor, that the fact that we're pending before the Board of Appeals is going to protect us from the new bylaw being in effect, we need to go get a special permit from the planning board after we've already gotten a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So I think that you need to take that into account. Now, I think in one, I'm, I'm pleased that if there's a special permit requirement, that it will be the planning board, so that one only would have to deal with in Mr. Cod, the planning board, site plan review and, and special permit. But I do think we're going backwards to require a special permit, and that that was not the intent of, of Mr. Cod. Remember, you need a special permit if you're going to have as many as eight multifamily units in the business redevelopment district. Need a special permit, giving people rights to appeal. Mr. Cod changed that. Town meeting went along with the planning board agreeing that for Mr. Cod projects that are providing affordable housing and are on the sewer and they're on Main Street in this restricted area, this is a by-right use. You don't need a special permit. And the town didn't want people to have, that is, planning board and the town meeting action, although there were some people who disagreed, didn't want people to appeal, this would become a by-right use. And we are going backwards by now saying that a special permit is required. So while I think it's a lot better than this problem we've had of being caught between the Board of Appeals and Planning Board, I just wanted you to be aware of, of those thoughts. You may have questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, and I'm happy to give you the language that I've drafted, although I'm sure it can be improved further.
Does anybody on the board have questions?
I actually need him to go over it again, I was interrupted when he was making the point by the phone ringing, what's going on, and I missed about two sentences of what Bob said while that was happening.
Which ones?
Right about the time the phone was ringing, and it was regarding to the special permit, I don't know if I need to say the whole thing again, but it was relating to the special, I didn't hear it, that's the problem.
Well, I was saying, Jim, that I'm glad that if, if a special permit is required, I'm glad it would be the planning board, but that the intent of town meeting was to eliminate the requirement for a planning board, for from any board.
Sorry.
For a Mr. Cod project that the planning board has reviewed and approved under site plan review.
And we have it all in writing. That's the next thing we're going to ask for.
I'm sure he was giving it to us in writing.
Well, I, I, I'm sure my language can be improved.
Bob, I want to take this opportunity to once more thank you for your careful study of it and your concern and givingness of this to us.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that too, because Mr. Amet has attended virtually every meeting and every hearing we've had, and has provided some valuable information on the development of these bylaws. And I too want to endorse, thank you for your efforts.
Do you have any?
Nothing to add.
Okay.
At this time.
Okay. Anybody else amongst the public who wishes to ask questions or make comments? And please do know that I know this is a lot to take in in one meeting, my head's swimming right now. If you have any questions, the planning office is always welcoming to you to come in and have things described, explained, any questions answered.
We may want to just take this opportunity to remind the public and anyone who's interested that your intent tonight is to keep the public hearing open until January 23rd, which is your next meeting, at which time you will finalize the warrant language. The select board are to execute the warrants on January 29th, and then you can keep your hearing open to allow for more, more commentary, and your recommendations are due by the end of February, so there's still time to dig into some of these bylaws and suggest changes.
Time, but not enough to Terry. Okay, thank you all for coming and listening and giving whatever input you have on this, I appreciate it. So we move on to planning board discussion, are there any?
Vote to continue it to the 23rd.
Oh, I didn't think we had to, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to continue this until January 23rd?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Pam is still listening, Pam?
Aye.
Okay, so five out of five. Thank you for pulling me up on that one. So, planning board discussion, committee reports, are there any? Guess not. Planning Department report.
We've been very busy, as you can see, we've been drafting our zoning bylaw amendments and getting them ready for the public.
Oh, could I ask all of you to take your comments out so that we can hear what's going on?
I don't hear you.
So among, among other things, we've been working on our zoning bylaw amendments, clearly are before the board tonight. We've also been very busy with our special projects. Paul, we've been working very hard on Shiverick's Pond, so we have some, potentially some exciting news for you in the next few days. But we did receive some final plans for the fishing pier and the viewing platform. And the environmental permitting is moving ahead well, so we may have some very exciting news perhaps at the next meeting to share with the whole group. We're excited to say that the Ed Marks Building that we've been helping out with, the Human Services Division or Department has moved into the first floor, so they're officially relocated into that building, and so Melinda and I are working with the advisory committee to come up with their final plans for the exterior improvements, which is going to include the siding and the trim, windows, et cetera, so there's a lot of work there.
Landscaping?
There'll be some landscaping, yes, yep. We're very excited to announce that we finalized our scope of work with our consultants, who is Stan Tech Engineering Firm, to conduct our first-ever downtown parking management plan. So our data collection windows currently are sometime in the spring before Memorial Day, and then again in, I believe it's July, to compare, you know, what parking utilization looks like in your downtimes, right, your off, off-peak season, and in midsummer, when things are very busy. And so that project itself will include a public participation component, right, so we'll have two public meetings, one at the very beginning of the process, one at the end, so, so at the beginning sort of explaining what the project is, and at the end showing the results. But it will give us implementation strategies for our downtown parking, and that includes the parking lots themselves, but also the on-street system, so very excited to see that start up. We're also working very hard to get the wayfinding plan off the ground with the Cape Cod Commission, so again, I've explained what that is, but that's essentially a, you know, signage and pavement marking campaign to bring people and direct people into the downtown and get folks to the public parking lots that we want them to utilize, but also down to the businesses that, you know, rely on their patronage. I'm blanking on other special projects that we have in the works, but there are many, and obviously recodification or zoning amendments is one of the bigger ones, so planning department's very, very, very hard at work, and there's a lot going on. But if you have any questions, happy to answer.
I've just, I don't know if it's possible to consider this, but is there any way you could compile a list of how much parking we actually have?
Yes, so that is the first part.
Right.
To identify your capacity.
And I'd also like to see how many cars we actually have in Falmouth. Because I have a feeling we have two or three parking spaces for every car.
That I cannot do for you, but.
Why, I can't.
No, no, I'm kidding.
Isn't that simply asking this, the, the
Tax collectors.
The tax collectors, how many cars are registered in Falmouth?
Well, registered.
That's one question.
It is, registered in, in Falmouth is, is.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. I thought you meant visitors.
No, I can't, you could never do visitors, you'd have to stand there and count every day, but.
You're right on Main Street.
But I have a feeling that we, the numbers are significantly higher, that we have multiple parking spaces for every car.
Yeah, it depends, you know, I think on the season, you know, I've driven around in the summer and, you know, there's times in the summer where you just can't find an open spot, so it, it really depends.
I know.
I think it fluctuates.
But that's, that's still an important point, you just generally don't design your parking maximum for your, only your peak seasons, you pave every part of town.
Exactly.
And that's the point, I mean, I think the point goes both ways.
Of course.
Just don't include the stamp chip authority parking in your analysis.
Right.
They're not, yeah, they're not, they're going to the island, they're not part of our.
Yeah, and so our study area generally is from the Depot Street Lot, which is out by the bike path, heading east all the way down to essentially where Gifford Street comes into Main Street, that's where the on-street parking typically ends. Conversations with the consultants, they want to try to dig into perhaps some of the private parking that's behind some of the shops on Main Street, that might get a little difficult because of those lots aren't typically striped, you know, so finding a capacity number for those is challenging in certain circumstances, some of them are striped and we can identify them, but all of this will be articulated to the public at that first public meeting, we'll have graphics that will show all of the study area, and then the point is to essentially go out and collect the data to say, on a typical weekend, at this time of the day, in the summertime, this is what your utilization looked like, and then compare that directly to that same timeframe just in the off-peak season, so on a weekend, certain time of day, and that way you can have a direct comparison as to how it looks differently. Obviously, you can't collect every day, but gives us at least a snapshot of what downtown parking might look like. So we're extremely excited about that.
Yeah, because until you know what you have.
It's hard to know what you want.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You mentioned Shiverick's Pond, is there an end game? How about the cost estimates, we don't know if enough money even builds what we're proposing. Is that coming in also next week?
It is, so we received draft numbers, and what I want to be able to do is solidify those first and then share with the board itself, but specifically you, to make sure that we do have enough money in our CPC fund to actually construct the project.
Will we be doing some value engineering on that project?
As much as we can.
They seem to be wanting to recreate something and going a bit overboard, and I'm concerned about that, that we have enough money to actually do the project.
Sure. Yeah, and so for the folks at home who, who may not know what it is, it's essentially a fishing platform, viewing platform, that will be constructed on the southwest side of Shiverick's Pond. There'll be a small little ADA compliant sidewalk that connects the new expanded sidewalk or shared-use path along Catherine Lee Bates that will connect directly to the platform. So folks will have the ability to, you know, go out into the platform and enjoy the pond itself. Down the road, the unofficial working group is looking into an accessible kayak launch to allow folks to actually recreate on the pond. And then, as Paul's mentioned numerous times, the idea of connecting that platform, that area on Shiverick's to the Lawrence School through, you know, a dedicated ADA accessible pathway. And again, that might come into play in the summertime when folks might be wanting to park at the Lawrence School, and they have easy access down to the downtown, so parking, wayfinding, Shiverick's, it all comes together and one happy family.
There's also a park there, Shiverick's Park.
Yes.
That's not included in that contract.
Yep.
And that is in the ball of the town.
Right.
And there's some talk about doing something by Arbor Day next year as some kind of celebration.
Right.
But unless it's moving forward, Arbor Day's not that far away.
It's not. I can already smell summer. But Paul's right, there's a access park right next to where the, the platform is going to be located, where the idea is to have sort of an, you know, a small winding accessible trail, some park benches, potentially some bike parking, because again, what you're doing is we're connecting the bike path to the downtown via Catherine Lee Bates, and what a nice spot to, you know, get off your bike, maybe park, sit and enjoy the pond, and then go downtown and grab an ice cream, who doesn't like ice cream? So that's all part of the master plan.
But that's different than that contract.
It, it absolutely is, yeah, it's a separate item, clearing that park and creating.
I'd appreciate being included in that.
Absolutely.
If possible.
You'll be cutting the ribbon.
We're going to call it Paul's Park, aren't we?
Yeah.
We were going to surprise him with that.
Maybe I'll get a name on the bench.
No, I don't want a name on the bench.
Oh, boy.
So that's the report from, unless you have something to add?
Thank you.
Are there any announcements? Okay. General correspondence? I don't have any here in front of me. Future agenda items? I think we've covered a whole lot of things that have to be done tonight.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, Pam.